Evening. Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight. Vince and Lisa are both on family vacation, so they won't be joining us. We're talking about prepare for our meeting, our June meeting tonight. Ms. Kelly will have the invocation and the pledge. Appalachian High School Junior ROTC will present the colors. We'll approve the minutes from 5:30 and the call meeting on 5:24. We'll review the agenda, over committee reports. Vince, Lisa, and Jordan had the clean school committee report. Building grounds committee, mayor may not report. Superintendent has some recognition next week. Baseball team, I guess, Appalachian High School, good stuff. We have some, may or may not have some visitors, and we have right now a couple of requests appear before us. So might have some people to hear speak. Okay, superintendent department reports, Dr. Green.
Yes, so I do, we have the vacation report there for June. We also have two student enrollment counts, 160th day of school student enrollment there, and 30th day of student enrollment out there for year three. Unless you have questions, that's all.
Thank you, sir. Houston.
Good evening. Tonight, the invoices paid between $20,000 and $24,999. The first one is Etsy Brothers from the general fund, $11,813, and that's for three-year professors, and of course, that's district-wide. Southern Computer Warehouse from the general fund, $12,841, and that's for B and W licensing, and that's district-wide, that's IT stuff. And then they have Fullerton School Solutions, here's funds, S O three, $10,888.8 for Wyandotte High School book order for literacy programs, and of course, that's going to serve Wyandotte High School. Global knowledge training from the general fund, $17,994, and that's for network training, that was sole source, that's district-wide. Georgia Department of Education was paid out of federal programs, $11,601.11, and that's the audit cost allocation for 2022, that's district-wide. Scholastic, paid out of here's fund, S O three, $12,623. That's for the state elementary school for their literacy program, and of course, that was served state elementary school. The last one is Tyler Technologies, paid out of general fund, $13,711, and that's immune disaster recovery services, this is our financial software, disaster recovery services for that. Of course, that global, that's district-wide.
I have a question, but I don't know that anybody's here for my answer it. I need to know what this literacy program is.
The literacy program, it's L4G, it is literacy, I'll talk about it tonight in my other funds. It's gonna be like 45 years presentation tonight, sorry, I'll copy. But it is our L4G, it's a brand new grant that we got, and it serves, we have Wyandotte High School, state elementary school, Wyandotte Elementary School, West Side Middle School, serves about four or five of our schools. And it is bringing more literacy into the classrooms, and I think it also gives us a literacy coach and a couple of.
Okay, is this the same program that the Bearwood partnership is working with also? Was that the same program?
Yes.
Okay, never mind, I got it.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Update on our new elementary school construction. You, you know, I just want to add there that first picture, the first work for two facilities really got it ours there. Hello, near tech, between the near tech and the amphitheater parking lot. That's, that's for the moving law well. There. Site there. We have two more snack boards, weather dependent, expecting those Thursday of this week, Tuesday next week. Steel, some of the steel, you know, live today. And if you're looking to begin putting that together, starting on Monday. And also, also, yeah, the rain block, so. It also milestones here recently, it's been a good progress.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Moulton. And Ms. Bates. Okay. Don't have any clarification, moving on to the consent agenda, some old business.
Yeah, the character's strong, we've had no, we've had a couple of people want to take a look at it, but we never received anything back from them. So we're ready to move that on, get a vote on it.
Okay.
I have a question about that. Do we have, you said several people asked about, have they asked to review it? Or have they, have they?
Ask for the link so they can go look at it.
Okay. I need that too, I'll do that later.
And then policy revision, J C D student conduct, Dr. Green. I believe we've had any comments on that either.
No comments on that one.
Okay. Move it on to new business, Dr. Beal.
I'm going to take a moment to recognize Dr. Green, he has announced his retirement, and I'm going to take a moment to publicly and formally thank him for the quality of his work. He is unsurpassed, he's very detailed, he's very serious about his work, and he's a very awesome school system. Then he is retiring. I am fortunate to be able to call him, I call him my friend. We have worked well together, and you are so deserving of all the life that's been stored. So I appreciate the wonderful work that you've done for us. Thank you for this, so I kind of give this time that I was in the office. Appreciate your strength.
Yes, it is time, it's been an absolute honor to work here, came here eight years ago. Never even been to Wyandotte before, perhaps past the whole preseason, including the back in town. But this, I was telling some folks earlier today, I always felt welcome here, immediately, a rock here with the school system. And felt like a part of the team, like a parent team, and a lot of that, it just speaks to the quality of folks that we have in there. I told, I tell them all the time that I just try to come every day, give it up to work and keep up with my colleagues, because we've got some amazing people. And I can honestly say, the quality of the leaders and the teachers in this district surpasses anywhere else that I've been. It's really, really amazing to work with this district, and it's just been an honor and pleasure to get to be a part of it. Thank you for the compliments that Dr. Moulton, Dr. White, and U S Ford have put into the last eight years. For the project next year, see what that was, thank you. Tonight, I agree forward to recommendation and instructional conversations. Superintendent recommends authorize the payment of up to $70,000 to the University of Georgia for registration fees for teachers from six schools in their district area for a multi-day instructional conversations institute facilitated by the Center for Latino Achievement and Success in Education. See schools were likely to send seventy teachers to a instructional conversations foundation institute throughout next school year. Instructional conversations is a research-based model for collaborative, conversation-based, culturally responsive, small group instruction that is ideal for teachers concerned with how we can use it culturally and linguistically diverse students. Some funds may also be used to provide follow-up support, be coaching, have additional training. The financial impact is $7,000 from a combination of L4G funds that we mentioned earlier and school consolidation funds.
Okay, any questions? Consent agenda.
All right, I have the next item also on the agenda for Kevin Vesinsky and Associates Professional Learning and School Improvement. The superintendent recommends authorize the payment of up to $60,000 to Kevin Vesinsky and Associates for facilitation site-based professional learning and line for the protocols of three individual L4G branch-funded schools and one school using consolidated funds. The four schools will contract with Kevin Vesinsky and Associates to provide professional learning to all teachers aligned with the district needs of their school, the distinct needs of their schools as outlined in each of their school improvement plans. The contracts will include onsite professional learning and support, as well as onsite preparation and analysis to inform future school visits. The scope of the work will include providing professional learning on writing instruction and assessment of writing, vertical alignment and consistency in writing instruction, alignment of reading and writing-based assessments to priority standards on content areas and/or deconstruction of standard assessment designs and genre-based education. The financial impact is $60,000 from a combination of L4G funds and school consolidation.
Questions? Consent agenda. Congratulations once again.
Yes, I hope I'm watching, I'm watching. I just wonder why you mentioned my wife, all the bookkeepers and all the employees since the first month. A special note, you've helped with coming through.
Thank you, sir. Okay. On video.
Yes, sir, thank you. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Rubric backup system. The district has outgrown our existing backup system, and we seek to upgrade to a more robust platform. Notably, it'll have increased capacity and additional cybersecurity preventative measures. We posted an R F P and three vendors responded. Low bid responded Sherlock met the terms of the R F P, is in good standing with the Better Business Bureau, and is not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. The financial impact is $90,175 from I T S funds, and the superintendent recommends awarding the purchase of the Rubric backup system from low bid responded Sherlock Technology of Lawrenceville in the amount of $90,175.
Have we ever used them before?
I know, this is new for us, but that's why we did a pretty good look at them with the Better Business Bureau and SAM.gov, and we have been talking to the vendor time for some of the technical background on the product before we decided on it.
Okay.
Consent agenda. Okay. Next, sir.
Yes, sir, Dell server R F P. The district's virtual server infrastructure has reached end of life and is in need of replacement. In case everyone's not familiar with what that is, a virtual server infrastructure is a collection of two or three physical servers who have the capacity to run virtual servers so that anytime we add a service, you know, Destiny or Campus or the like, instead of buying new hardware, we just spin up a new instance of a virtual server on the existing physical servers that we have, so we can run, you know, anywhere from twenty, thirty to one virtual servers on a single physical server. So this saves us money and electricity and cooling and all that over the long haul. Our current infrastructure has reached end of life, and so we're replacing it. An R F P was posted, thirteen vendors responded, and low bid respondent Deft met the terms of the R F P. They have an A-plus rating with the Better Business Bureau, and they are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. The financial impact is $78,500 from I T S funds. The superintendent recommends awarding the purchase of Dell servers to low bid respondent Deft of Chicago, Illinois in the amount of $78,500.
Questions? Consent agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Next.
As part of our annual refresh program, a portion of district teacher desktops are being replaced with laptops this year. An R F P was posted and nineteen vendors responded. Because we were uncertain about issues such as availability and pricing with, with the scarcity issues we've had over the last couple of years, we had four models for consideration in our R F P, with one model being the one we particularly wanted, our primary choice, but we also identified three additional models in case pricing or availability precluded our primary choice. However, fortunately, pricing for our first choice came in within budget constraints and are readily available. Of the nineteen responding vendors, twelve submitted proposals for that particular model. The low bid respondent H P I International of Brooklyn, New York met the terms of the R F P. They're in good standing with the Better Business Bureau, and they are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. So we will be purchasing 690 laptops out of a combination of S F L O S T and S S R funds for a total of $731,704.60, deploying in end of summer or probably first quarter of the first three months of the academic year. We are also seeking approval for additional purchases from other budgets for an additional maximum of $265,110 or 250 additional laptops in case other departments or schools seek to purchase laptops outside of what we have planned through August 31st, 2022, basically to get us through the first start of the school year, subject, of course, to normal board reporting guidelines. Financial impact is $731,704.60 from S F L O S T and the S S R funds dedicated to I T S spending, and up to an additional $265,110 to various other budgets. So the superintendent recommends authorizing the purchase of laptops from low bid respondent H P I International of Brooklyn, New York in the amount of $1,060.44 per laptops, 690 laptops for a total of $731,000 from I T S S F L O S T and S S R funds, and also authorizing additional laptop purchases up to an additional $265,000 through the end of August 2022 for various other budgets, subject to normal border parting guidelines.
Any questions? Consent agenda.
Okay. Thank you. The last one for me, I promise. Clear touch panels. As part of our district's continuing technology upgrade and a refresh program, their touch interactive panels are sought to replace outdated classroom projectors. An R F P was posted and four vendors responded. Low bid responded Tech Optics of Wyandotte, Georgia met the terms of the R F P. They've done similar business with us before and are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. Financial impact is $1,363,074 from various budgets. And in case anyone is wondering, that will purchase 218 clear touch panels, and the superintendent recommends awarding the purchase of clear touch interactive panels from low bid respondent Tech Optics of Wyandotte, Georgia in the amount of $4,543.58 per panel through the end of December 2022 for a maximum of $1,363,074 for various budgets.
Questions?
John, this is Ricky, insist, well, place my own advice.
This is part of our five-year ongoing program where we're replacing projectors and any other kind of smart technologies, much as the, the smart panels or the Promethean panels that are out of date and end of life. These are, yes, sir, these are an upgrade.
Thank you.
And we expect these to have a lifespan of approximately ten years.
How long we had the existing panels?
The Promethean panels, mostly what we're replacing now are clear touch. The existing panels, if any, are still in the system, are eight, nine, 10 years old. They are back way in the Ed Morrison days.
Where's most of the money coming from, some various budgets?
Primarily mine will be S F L O S T, ones I'm buying the 218 panels out of, and then schools sometimes ask for personal quotes to buy their own panels.
Consent agenda.
Dr. Michael, I think it's important to insert here, I recently had a conversation with a teacher this week who was in Barrow County. We talked about teacher retention a lot here recently. She was in Barrow County, she left to go to Jefferson City Schools a couple of years ago and came back to Barrow County. And one of the things that she said was that technology is something that Barrow County Schools does so well in comparison to some of our neighboring schools that when you go to some of these other counties, it's like stepping back in time because we do this so well. So I think it's, I think that I'm really appreciative of you, Mr. St. Clair and all of you for always staying on top of these things and going in and finding these, you know, low bids and everything that we need to keep our students at the forefront of the technological world because everything they do is based around technology, and our teachers do realize that, and they know that that's one thing that we do really well here. So I think this is a bragging point, just to zoom in on this moment.
John and his team and the technology folks in the schools, too, and the teachers are very proficient also.
They are. This is definitely a place where we shine, our, our system shines, and thank you, sir.
That's wonderful to hear, it's been a long road.
Mr. St. Clair, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Dr. Moulton.
For our middle school mathematics resource to support the curriculum standards, we currently use open up resources for grade six through eight. This purchase will provide students in grade six through eight with a similar workbook. The financial impact will be the purchase of 2,140 workbooks for traditional instruction at a cost of $15 each. Additionally, 60 workbooks for advanced instruction at $25 each. The $33,600, this is the amount would be $33,600 from S F three art funds annually. You have four quotes that are listed there for the middle schools. The superintendent recommends authorizing the purchase of open up master workbooks for study edge. This is a sole source provider and moving for the 2022, 2023 school year. Open up workbooks will be purchased from the same funding source.
Any questions?
I did, when I was looking over this, I noticed on one, just for instance, on their grade, it only looks like the seventh grade is the only one that has accelerated workbooks, none of the other grades have accelerated.
Right, that's because of changes with mathematics that are pending for the middle school level. Advanced students will have, will do advanced with those sixth grade students.
Okay, and what, okay, and the eighth grade?
There will be advanced as well.
Okay, so there won't be a story.
Consent agenda. Okay.
The district math specialist, Mrs. Tamara Bowden, worked with the maintenance department to collect pricing from three different vendors. Claridge, School Outfitters, and Granger. Claridge products and equipment have the best price overall for market boards installation and removal of existing court boards. The market boards will be installed in middle school math classrooms for this summer. This is the labor piece of this information we talked about before, it has been presented before, but we wanted to pull it off to get the price on labor, so that we could give you all the information pertaining to that. Market boards will be mounted on all available wall space, planting court boards where needed to create 360-degree classrooms and workspace for students. Students can work to solve problems both independently and collaboratively, while the teacher can easily see each student's work in order to provide immediate feedback and assistance. The 360-degree math classroom has been shown to increase both student engagement and student outcomes. The financial impact is $70,852.66 from S F three art funds. You have quotes that are linked there, and the superintendent recommends the purchase and installation of market boards for 39 middle school math classrooms from Claridge Products and Equipment out of Wataunka, Alabama in the amount of $55,352.66 for market boards, $10,000 for installation, and $5,500 for removal of existing boards.
Questions?
So Dr. Moulton, if my math is correct, this is going to cost us $39.75, please do. Take them down, take the old down, install the new ones. That's $10,000 for installation, $5,500. What a profit.
It's cheap. Good job, Joe Pernos.
Thank you.
And that's Tamara Bowden, she.
Good job, Tamara Bowden.
Yeah, very, very hard to put all this together and to go back and make sure that labor piece was, you know, was correct and that they could comply, comply with the David Bacon Wage Act, so we're a lot of credit.
So thank you all for you, and thank you for walking the building, especially.
Consent agenda.
The kids are going to enjoy that.
Yes, absolutely. And the last one from Tishna Learning. Formative is a web-based learning tool that allows teachers to monitor access to the learning. Teachers can assign activities and assessments for formative and monitor progress in real time. Student data from formative provided from, from student data that formative provides can be easily analyzed to inform instructional decisions. Formative also integrates with Microsoft Teams. The locked browser expansion prevents students from opening additional tabs during assignments and during assessments. Two virtual professional learning sessions with all middle school teachers are included in the quote as well as access to a video library and webinars that teachers can access at any time. The financial impact, you can see there, for the partner licenses, $3,366 at $8.35 each for a total of $28,106.10. Locked browser expansion, $3,366 at $1 each for a total of $3,366. The professional learning that accompanies formative is at a price of $1,500. The total expenditure is $32,972 from S F three art funds, and there are quotes there that are linked for formative and a copy of the sole source letter. The superintendent recommends authorizing the purchase of formative partner licenses for all middle school students, teachers, and administrators along with access to the locked, locked browser option and professional learning to support implementation for the 2022, 23 school year. Formative, again, is a sole source provider.
Questions? Consent agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you. Mr. Brown.
November of last year brought recommendations for Charlotte Black Construction, Bearwood Construction Manager for non-state funded projects. In January of this year, we brought a guarantee of actual price proposal, $185,000 for them to relocate mobiles and put in place new mobiles. And we originally had them plan to relocate five existing mobiles and put in place six new mobile units. And since that time, we've asked them to move nine, and put in place nine new ones. So we've got a difference of seven mobile units there since January that we're asking them to handle. This is, this includes planning, these moves, putting in decks, sidewalks, fire alarm, intercom, H A C controls. We've also done in that time, extensive walkthrough with Jackson M C, our provider, of these locations for mobiles. But we were maxed out for power at Yargo and Kennedy, so we had to increase our service at those locations to accommodate these mobile units. So saying all that to say that we're asking the superintendent to recommend a change of work amount of $315,000. The RE approved guarantee maximum price of $185,000 to allow. to allow a contractor, this is Charlotte Black Construction, to assist placement and installation of all the units.
So basically you're upping the workload and paying.
Correct.
So Joe, how many more of these things we might have?
We have one left. So as far as existing units, we'll have one more.
Next thing I would be buying.
Yeah.
Consent agenda. Thank you, sir. Green.
Okay, I'm coming to you tonight with another policy revision. House Bill 1292, which was passed this legislative session, passed the law on May 2nd, requires schools to count students present who are participating in activities or programs sponsored by the Reds in the same manner that we would as soon as we go into education. So we made a minor change to a sentence in our existing policy JVD for absences and excuses. Just after the list of things that would be excused absences, we've rewritten that very next sentence to read students serving as pages of the Georgia General Assembly and students participating in an activity or program sponsored by 4H shall be counted present on the days missed for these purposes. It was just a one sentence update to be able to be in compliance with the duty passed and signed law. And we would ask that this policy be placed on table until the next regularly scheduled meeting so that we can proceed to the public input.
This puts us in the last, we're starting. We have control.
Oh, no, no.
Nope. Does it have to be by on the table 30 days or just till next week when we?
Well, we do it till the next regularly scheduled meeting that's.
Next week.
No, I'm sorry. No, your vote on Tuesday, this coming Tuesday.
On the table to the next.
Set on table until the July meeting.
Over something that we have no choice to do because it's the law.
That's the way our policy is designed. I mean, the law that says we need policy, it says we have a duty, it says we have this policy that says that we should add it to policy.
Just sounds, uh huh, sounds so beautiful.
We got it.
We got it.
All right. Jason Ayers, you're going to be here for this awhile.
I hope not.
Step up, talk fast.
Step right up. I just realized, this didn't help. I had to go to a walk in. It's just, I will move quick because I can, I just realized I didn't put on the condensed version, so look to you guys. On that, I just don't have the amounts of probably to financial impacts on the bus vendors and stuff like that. So you guys have a copy of that. Here we go. Excuse me, White League Service Bid, Superintendent recommends approval of Colorado voting. This is only a bid we received for that particular service. That's not a white service for repairs and stuff. I think the financial bank, $55 labor rate, I'm sure like $60,000.
Correct.
Give it away to Lee Corners, we got us.
No, we'll go through them one at a time. Consent agenda, everybody, questions? Okay. That one's good. Thank you.
Fuel patrol, oil indication bid, Superintendent recommends approval of the fuel patrol and oil indication bid, the bottle of oil company. Excuse me, got a little choked up. Was averages and stuff, I'm sorry. Anyway, average response time for emergency delivery is 30 minutes. Bottles right up the road that give us a good service. Ever since they've been in long time, slow time, that was the main thing. Price is pretty comparable to the other vendors, just response time and level of service.
Any questions on this? It's kind of the times we're in. Consent agenda. Okay.
Both parts of shop supplies bid, Superintendent recommends approval of the use of three lowest bids highlighted in yellow for the each specific capital reports. Batteries, breakage, break rooms, all the numbers starters and all the highlighted bids give the category for any additional folks in the mid town.
Any questions about these?
Not about the bid, but just power label or parts and stuff like that.
Pretty much, it's why we have so many of them there, just kind of the same thing, availability price, all that, you know. Obviously we'll label when they do get forward, so kind of the same trouble everybody's in.
Do have to get on that part, you know, obviously you have to be agile with that whole thing.
Because getting buses fixed.
Thank you. Consent agenda. All right.
But that's, bus access vendor, service center per bid, Superintendent recommends approval of the tax list of vendors, raps, or bus carriers. It's pretty much the same thing as fine costs. You got to get whoever to get to you quicks on that. We sold off the lowest bid and whoever's fighting with that.
This is two years.
Three years, I think, three, four.
Consent agenda. Okay.
County District Superintendent recommends approval of the second lowest bid respondent, Southern Tymore. Reason for it was just service, based, you know, the difference in price, one place, one whole lot. Basically saying was level of service they get, quality of product, the support they give us, we need tires. The other thing is they do real well with like recap services and stuff. They have a real high quality and reputable, good reputation for that.
Consent agenda.
Product, my lord.
Yes.
Okay.
Good, okay. This will start off with the bus purchases. Guys, if you've looked at this, it's a few things different. Firstly, the purpose is we isn't, I'm looking, my greatest for air conditioning. We bid these buses out expecting the air condition. I don't know, every district around is kind of doing that thing. I think it's kind of an outdated even discussion I have. But I think it's time, you know, to have that old and put them on bus. But we got the top of the, top of the line schools and technology and everything else. And we got buses running around with year round heat, so you know, I think everybody will agree what we're up against with that one. So I wanted to prep that, just that I can stop my great fleet and the new buses we have with air conditioning. So you'll see the numbers and we'll just go through it if you got any questions. Bus being on, what they, they have one huge, we didn't receive state bond money, this is important for everybody to know. We've had a lot of people on the note, we didn't see enough state bonds for 20 buses. And that amount is 1,762,000 people in town, the federal county doesn't have to pay for those buses. That's a wonderful thing. It's a wonderful thing. Basically, we paid out to you $88,110 per bus, 20 buses. So obviously we had to make up the shortfall of that, that's where we come in, you know, make as possible support that, so make a purchase difference. Anyway, the first is 72 passenger with lift bus. Basically what that is, like our fifth buses, special needs that have the lifts, the shorter buses, these are two full size buses for that same purpose. You know, what we're looking at, I figure our strategy with the road we're seeing and a few of these before, it's worked out really well. We've got shorter buses running around with less children on them. If we could have more children behind them, the same number of drivers we're going with. So it makes us adaptable, makes us agile as far as our route to go. If we evaluate, we have two short buses running around, we can bind, put them on one bus, there you go. That's free up bus for your inside. You see what I mean? So just have, just kind of lucky of us strategies, you got to see it, you got to walk down through this. But basically two of those buses told money amount, we made told money amount of $176,240. Slos mountain needs for that 69,780.
Okay, so let's talk about these buses for a second. And I'm all about, you know, consolidating and that sort of thing. However, what, how much time are these students going to have to spend on these buses?
You use the closest route, you wouldn't, you wouldn't want to, you wouldn't want to extend the time to thousands of activities to two of them. You would do it like, you got a couple of routes for buses, still with something, you would put them on, you keep it on the most condensed route and put the most fire on the bus and get them off within a reasonable amount.
So they're going to define reasonable amount of time to make.
Well, it depends on how, hopefully, we try to stay within a two hour window or whatever. You know, it's always ride time and stuff like that. Here with the tears, you go about an hour or about next to an hour. So each tear, you don't have a whole lot of time without, that's a big sign, you know, waiting to fit. Each tear goes to mental venture, you know, mental hospital like that. So you're looking for five minutes to, it would be hard to do that because we have, we have buses aimed up in different places. But also, this is kind of a source of growth for the new school later here. Next couple of years, you don't see the time to be agile and have a club to them.
So basically the children are not, if you put two kids on a bus where normally you have one, they're not going to spend, you're telling me they're not going to spend that much more time. They're still not going to be on the bus more than an hour.
No, we would optimize about as much as, how much if you get, get the social scene, you know, if your smaller buses run out, you have the most disposable. You know, you just optimize your thousand.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question since you're mentioning bonds and this stuff on this particular issue. I know the prices on the other are high right now because everything's inflated. But we're talking from, not just a year, we're talking giving them a contract for 2023 to 2025. Are we locked into that if the prices go down? Because we don't know what's going to happen with the economy in the next two to three years.
You talking about all the vendors?
Yeah, on these vendors. Are we locked into those prices to give them the high prices if we go through a recession?
No, and you talking as far as our repairs and outsales and stuff.
Yeah, are we going to still give them those high rates?
No, basically the price, the price goes, it just kind of, we kind of side with it, no one, per dollar agreement or anything on that. They don't think we got locked into these labor rates and those have been consistently the same. What we pay, what we pay the difference of some parts, same as everybody else's parts go up with the vendor, they supply us. We have to pay that mark up as it goes down, we pay that stuff.
Okay, that's what I'm wanting to know because.
Yeah. No, we're not locking, we're not locking any of those prices that move around, you know, when they sell to you.
Consent agenda on the lift bus. Okay, all right.
All right, extended capacity bus, Superintendent recommends use of slosh funds. We purchase eight, eight more passenger buses, be set freight liner, bond total amount $704,888. Total slos amount of $88,488. This one out here is another one, you get 12 more kids per bus versus, you know, you put four of these buses out there, you're basically eliminating the need for another bus to arrive. So we're trying to get with, you know, with the population density, we're seeing some of these is going up, all that, that's, you know, that goes, so, so, that goes, but that's getting all the service, you know, service to the, the high populated, the dense populated area.
Questions? Consent agenda. Okay.
Bus being, 14 bus with activity bus, but this is a total slos purchase, there's no bond amount for that. It's not, can't use for a taxi bus and that big style bus. These are not yellow buses with lights, these are white buses. Basically what they're for is for activities that do not, the people, the people that are driving don't have to have CEO. You can teach and do it, coach can do it, anybody that's not CEO. We can leave them, you know, like at the hospitals or something that have a golf team, tennis group or something, they're small, anybody can drive that bus. That lets us keep CEO driver and big bus, you know, for all of a handful of kids, we would use smaller ones. Plus they can go out on trips and things like that. That amounts, let's see here, 100 people, 1,000.
I'm going to show my owners, do we currently have any?
So 14 plus one is 14 people plus the driver, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
So it's basically a 15 passenger van, in essence.
Yeah, it was a different test, it'd be 14 passengers plus passengers, 14 plus one, but yeah, you got to say it that way, it's not quite about those. Just basically.
Yes, certainly, certainly there's a lot of differences.
I got church this.
The candy for the kids, basically.
You got a driver, you got a whole six driver. Nobody's going to want to do it.
Much more economical though for small groups.
Well, while you're at your 80 miles gallon versus six, you know, you don't have a big bus and all that. Then you don't tax the driver, you don't have a one hour slot rider. Oh, we will, but we mean those sounds for coaching driver or teaching driver or something like that.
Thanks.
Yeah, this is, that's a roomy thing like that.
Only two, people are going to be fighting over them things.
But that going like the yellow light, we did not, we did not want to risk us having to pull that bus, we're just going to dead end, you know, right people.
Consent agenda.
Yes.
Okay.
Radio service bid?
Yes. You skipped the seventy investment output.
Oh. Eighteen.
Oh, sorry, we had lots of, we're highlighting this. All right. Superintendent recommends use of slosh, bus supplement, state bonds for purchase of 10 72 passenger buses, be set freight liner, total bond amount $881,000, total slos amount needs $888,780. And these are just typical 72 passengers like we've got, like we've had for years, differences that got seen.
How long will it take us to have air conditioning on all our buses if we do this on a rotation basis?
Well, it's going to, it's going to have a problem approach because all of our buses, we're not going to wear them because they're so old. I think below 2007, I think over 2007, we made kits for them, so we wouldn't, we, you know, so we're phasing at that point, you know, we just have to move forward. Ressort efficiency for the other buses that are new enough, but we have to really look at what age of our bus is and we're not going to spend that kind of money on a bus that would possibly fix them, you know, certain buses or something like that. So I guess if you look at it, the better way to be honest, to take this, to take the whole fleet between buying new buses and all that, probably two to three years, if everything holds up like it is, you know, we're doing pretty good with our slos a lot, so as long as we can keep doing that.
So, so within three years, all of our buses should, should have air conditioning?
Yes, yes, that's the number.
How, how are you?
As long as we stay a whole program, like I said, anything can change, but I mean, we're hoping pretty good with our lot.
How, how are you going to decide who gets the buses with the air? You know, that's going to be the issue. You're going to draw strong. What I've been hearing about this for over 20 years.
I don't know, you did, you're exactly right, when you started with this, you really get into the, you know, I want this, I want that, because this is much better. By the first, we own this, you know, route name, it was, but the two are deserved route, a good plus, it's much better. So I don't know, I'm usually pretty good with questions, but that one I never, we're still not making those waters. But right now, I don't know about your model of books, if I have just one to do next, they'll go by the year model. Again, we're not going to try to look at retrofit buses that are just too old and we're going to be rid of a couple of years.
How many of these buses do we have that are too old?
Probably about 100 now.
So how many total, how many total buses do we have?
About 200, I believe, is that 200? We've got a few, we've got a few of the weeds, but 200 we can take. There'll be a few.
A few more next year and forth. Be prepared, people are going to want like battle pay. I mean, there's going to be a time where you're phasing these out and if they're driving a non-air conditioned bus, the drivers are going to expect something in return. That's a difficult to get through it, but I might as well reach out.
Well, I've got a lot of colleagues in the industry, just give me some pointers on, trust me, it's not, certainly air conditioning is not a new topic, so.
Has someone told you that they want some of us to ride in August to see how hot it is?
Yes, that would be staying, that would be staying in the nation. Yeah, but nobody disputes it.
Well, only if I'm invited, I'll do it, but if you don't invite me.
There you go, there you go.
We will go as quickly as we can, for sure.
So how many buses are we talking about in total this year?
This right here, this purchase here, you're looking at 20 buses that still have these.
But then you're retrofitting a number two.
So in total, you're only going to get 20 this year?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about here. Like I said, we have to, if you guys are a bit less migrant, if they know that, we'll come up with an RP, we'll give all those numbers up. I'll go back to you guys with a little bit of detail on retrofit.
Okay.
Consent agenda on 18.
Radio service bid, we had one, one bid for that, which was our communications. Those guys are really prone to, you know, they gave me a lot of defaults, they were saying the only one. They have a guy that's right down the road from the shop near there. If we call him in 10 minutes, that's kind of where we're going, dealing with our radios or camera systems and stuff, so that one was decent there.
Any questions? Consent agenda. Okay.
Last but not least, fuel budget, I, you know, a couple of you guys, a couple of months back, we needed to package our fuel budget. Well, with the onset of summer school and a few other things, some of them have been having a bad year. The fuel is not relaxing in prices, so Superintendent requests a few budget for general fund balance. My request is $150,000, and that's to get us through the summer school. We're probably not going to use it all, just want a little bit of contingency and dedication.
Consent agenda. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Houston, you're back.
All right, tonight we are going to talk about other funds budget. So we've already talked about the general fund budget and we gave you tentative approval on that. So this is our other budget, these are the funds that will retain on them, we can only use them for certain. and, um, we gave you tentative approval on that, so this is our other budget, these are the funds that help us retain on them, we can only use them for certain items. So, we will, we're here, alright? Okay, so, um, the way the school system is funded, we have these buckets generally helping to have this visual to help, uh, people understand school system funding. So, um, school systems receive funding that's required to be used in specific ways, we like to bank if those funds is bucketed, each bucket can pay for certain expenses. So you have the general fund, and this, the source of funding here is, um, state QBE, quality basic education funding, and also local property taxes. This can be spent on teacher salaries, student transportation, instructional supplies, maintenance, um, all of that stuff goes into the general fund, we've already talked about that one. The next funds are federal funds, and so these come from, um, federal grants, and they have to be used, um, specific grant requirement. So examples are Perkins' four funding must be used to improve, expand career education, and improve student academic and technical performance. Uh, we also get school nutrition funds, so this is USDA federal funds, and this has to be spent on school cafeterias, equipment, supply, and labor. You know, it's also to offset the food costs per student, and then we have these loss funds. The, uh, source of these loss funds are, of course, our local sales tax, and we also get bond funds. Um, these are for capital expenditures like school buses, building renovations, new schools, and technology equipment. So our other funds are capital project funds, debt service funds, consolidated funds, each one of these has their own fund. Um, we, we take, bring the money in and spend it, and it usually, um, equals zero at the end, except for cap, except for capital project funds in our school, um, food nutrition funds. Uh, title one, title two, title three, title four, special education, vocational education, federal funded, JR OTC, education of homeless children, pre-K lottery, enterprise funds, school food nutrition, L-ORGAs, and new one, CARES two, and CARES three, American League plan. So we'll go through each one of these individually, but I'm gonna check those stats if I can, which I'll just stop maybe at any minute, or if you have any questions. Our capital projects fund is a governmental fund used to account for financial resources to be used for the acquisition, construction, and equipping of new schools and facilities, including but not limited to new school buildings, physical education, athletic facilities and equipment, classrooms, lunchrooms, student meetings, and auditoriums renovations, and equipment for existing facilities, and the acquisition and purchase of any property necessary and desirable, therefore, both real and personal property, including but not limited to technology, safety, security equipment, buses, vehicles, and transportation facility and equipment. So that is what our taxpayers voted on to say that they wanted a sales tax, this would be a back warning, and this is what we use these funds on. The revenues come from E, um, from ELOS, it's our sales tax proceeds, um, also interest revenues that we receive on that land in the bank, and the GSNVAC states state reimbursement, state reimburses us for some school facilities if there's a need. Expenditures are for buildings, renovations, salaries, buses, and technology, now salaries, they're only for few specific people that work specifically on facilities. And then we also transfer out to the debt service fund to pay for school and interest on our loans. This is another visual, just to talk about how the capital project fund works, because we need to understand that some years, we're gonna have a lot more expenditures than other years. Other years, we're, we're, um, ordering the money, trying to get the money, because we've got a new school that we have to fund in a few years. So we have to, we have to collect that money before we can spend it. So we did our ELOS proceeds, we have the interest revenues and reimbursement, and then we slowly, um, collect that money, and then there'll be a year where we spend that, and we start all over with a low, low fund balance, but we're always, um, collecting more, uh, proceeds so we can fund that next, next school. So our capital project funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, we're, we're, we're estimating that we're gonna receive seventeen million, two hundred thirty thousand, hundred forty-eight in revenues, and we're planning on spending forty-six million, one hundred and five thousand, six hundred and ninety-one. So we would have, uh, we're predicting a net loss, because remember, we have a lot of schools and facilities that we're gonna be building next year. And so our fund balance currently is about twenty-nine million dollars, so we'll, our fund balance will go down to about a hundred twenty-four thousand dollars after next year, that's what we're predicting. Some of the, um, expenditures of that plan are Austin Road campus expansion, that's gonna be about twenty-two point one million. Our renovations of existing building, building, eight point nine million, um, maintenance projects, about a million dollars. IT projects, two point six million dollars, buses and transportation, one point one million, personnel, order of vehicle, of course, these are only specific individuals that deal with facilities, and, um, building new, um, buildings. Our audit and administrative fees, twenty-five thousand eight hundred, debt service, two hundred thirty-seven thousand, and then transfer to our debt service fund to pay for bonds, nine point four million. Next fund is our debt service fund, a governmental fund used to account for payment of general long-term debts, so our current debt right now is ninety-eight point four million dollars, that comes, um, in bonds that we have, and we, uh, receive transferred in in capital project funds, just like I've been talking about, and our expenditures are bond principal and interest every year. So this year, we're gonna transfer in nine point four million dollars, we're gonna spend that nine point four million dollars on interest and, uh, principal of our bonds. Next are our federal funds, federal funds will be allocated in June of every year. These are all reimbursable grant funds, um, we pay for the expenditures, and then we request reimbursement. Um, project expenditures and revenues are based on fiscal year twenty twenty-two actuals. And our federal funds, we normally receive about six point seven million dollars in federal funds, this year will be about thirteen point five, we just have the CARES S O funds, and it does not include, um, but that does not include school food, food nutrition. Alright, so this is talking about title one, two, and four. The purpose of title one to enforce to enable schools to provide opportunities for at-risk and disadvantaged children to acquire the knowledge and skills contained in the challenging state content standards, to meet the challenging state performance standards developed for all children. The, uh, we receive federal funds in the following areas, title one is improving academic achievement for the disadvantaged. Title one C, support migrant education, title two, professional learning, um, which is, oh, sorry, we just transferred into title one. Title four A is for student support and academic enrichment, and they transfer into title one. Our expenditures include additional parent support, instructional coaches, technology, family engagement, instructional materials, and mixed专业的 salaries and tutoring. And most of this money is gonna transfer into our consolidated funds, so our principals, um, can use it as needed. The budget will be, um, three point two million revenues out of title one A, twenty thousand revenues in title one C, and our expenditures budget will be three point two million out of title one A, and twenty thousand out of title one C, and we see that equals zero, so there's no, um, no net loss for, uh, netting off. Our title two, the purpose of title two is to increase the academic achievement by improving teacher and leader quality. Our revenues are federal funds, improving teacher quality, and our expenditures are transferred out of title one for consolidated funds, and they go, they're consolidated funds, um, go, so the principals, uh, can decide what is best for their schools to event. And we are anticipating four hundred forty-four thousand dollars, and of course, it will be transferred out for schools to use. Title three is language instruction for English learners, the purpose of title three is to provide English learners with language support supplements to the district office for civil rights compliance, um, English speakers of other language, program staff, and implemented with state and local funds. Revenue is federal funds, our expenditures, our salaries, teacher stipends, professional learning subscriptions, like a Rosetta Stone, um, translation, and supplies and equipment. We anticipate receiving a hundred seventy-two thousand nine hundred fifty-four, and spending is a hundred seventy-two thousand nine hundred fifty-four. Our title four A is student support and academic enrichment, um, these grants are intended to improve students' academic achievement by increasing the capacity of states, um, LEA schools and local communities to provide all students with access to a well-bounded education, improve school conditions for student learning, and improve the use of technology in order to improve the academic achievement and digital literacy of all students. Our specific initiatives, um, student mental health and find our support, and unfortunately, is transferred to title one for consolidated funds. This is what the budget looks like for title four A, where we anticipate receiving two hundred one thousand five hundred and nine. Our special, special education, um, IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Act, the special education program in Veracaville, such child-centered education process designed to address individual student needs. The revenues receive federal fund, funds from four B, or six B, um, special education, special ed preschool, and high cost grant. The expenditures are parent support, shared services, nursing support, administration, equipment, and instructional supplies, learning platform for specialty. Our anticipated, uh, revenues, two point eight, um, for special ed, six B, um, for the high cost grant, seventeen thousand, and our special ed preschool, hundred forty-six thousand. Educational education federally funded, also known as the CTAE. This looks for new and innovative ways to prepare our students for college and career success, with the choice of thirty different career pathways, and fifteen career clusters. Students can earn credentials and college credit in almost any career area of interest. And our revenues are the federal Perkins' grant, which is approximately a hundred thirty-six thousand, and our expenditures are equipment, membership dues, and supplies. This is what their budget looks like, coming seventeen thousand from Perkins', um, five, and eighteen thousand from Perkins' five reserve. For junior ROTC, so our ROTC serves the Character and Leadership Development Program for our high school students, retired army instructors, leave the program. Our revenues are funded through the Department of Defense for approximately thirty-three percent salaries and benefits of these instructors, and then we transfer the rest in the general fund, and our expenditures are salaries and benefits. So it looks like we're gonna receive about a hundred forty-one thousand dollars in federal funds for our ROTC instructors, and we transfer about four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars out to the general fund for these instructors. Our title nine, hard A, education of homeless children, Veracaville School System adheres to the requirements of the McKinsey-Ventor Homeless Education Assistance Improvement Act of two thousand and one, to ensure that all children and youth receive a free and appropriate public education, are given meaningful opportunities to succeed in our schools. Our revenues are federal funds, and our expenditures are for after-school tutoring programs, credit recovery, transportation, school supplies, hygiene items, and emergency clothing. This is what our twenty twenty-three budget looks like, fifty-two thousand five hundred seventy dollars to cover these expenditures.
How many children do we currently have homeless, do we know?
But keep in mind, that doesn't mean they are without, you know, a home, making the boss have to be double up, the family, the hardship, and grinding, you know, some of them are true, but not, not all of those.
Well, and the majority of this goes to transportation, is, is my.
Yeah, it almost all of it.
Right, and some of them may not even be in account.
That's correct, so, but we typically develop, um, an understanding surrounding counties that they need, uh, mutually, plus near camera, to transport the students.
Right, I was, this, this number changes from time to time, so just curious to know how the folks would have classified as not living in their primary home. So we think it's about three hundred. Thank you.
This is our pre-K program, um, the pre-K program is a lottery-funded educational program for four-year-olds to prepare children for kindergarten. Our revenues are state lottery funds and transfers from the general fund, and our expenditures are salaries and benefits for teachers and paratroops, equipment, materials, supplies, and administrative salaries. This is what our revenue, our budget looks like for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, we believe that we're gonna get a four point nine million dollars of state reimbursements, and have to transfer in four hundred forty-two thousand dollars of the general fund to cover our pre-K. Our CARES Act two, our CARES two provides education funding to state education agencies and local education agi, agencies to support schools that they are dealing with the effects of COVID nineteen pandemic. Our revenues are federal funds, one point six million dollars this year, our total allotment was eight point eight million dollars, so, so far, we can use six point six million dollars. Our expenditures are professional learning, technology, instruction, nursing supplies, and direct costs. This is what, um, the budget looks like, one point six million dollars, one point five will be spent, this is on instruction. Our CARES Act three, this provides education funding to state education agencies and local, same, same, schools of, of, dealing with the effects of COVID nineteen pandemic. Um, twenty percent of the CARES Act three will be spent on learning loss. Our revenues are federal funds, it's about three point eight million dollars that we're, um, asking to spend this year. The total allotment that we received is nineteen point nine million to be spent by June thirty, twenty twenty-four, and the total expense of our six point five million. Our expenditures are summer school, after school, graduation specialist, academic interventionist, instructional technology integration specialist, a grant administrator, professional learning technology.
Now, assuming that the CARES money is like all federal money, if you don't use it, you're just gonna die.
Correct, right.
Why are we only spending twenty percent on, um, instructional services?
Yes, we're just playing on learning loss.
Well, yeah, exactly.
Services, we're using the majority of it on, but to consider learning loss, that's basically at, um, summer school, after school. Yeah, that's about twenty percent of it, but we got these academic interventionists that are helping, I think we could consider a lot more learning loss, but that's what we have identified specifically in the grant.
It's a minimum of twenty percent, that's right.
Thank you.
Okay, well, the only reason I ask the question is because it seems to me that we, we've had a lot of learning loss in the last two years, I don't think there's any doubt about that. And so, but you're telling me that the twenty percent, we're just considering this particular piece, and then we've got all this other, so we're really spending most of this money on getting our students up to speed.
Sure, so I probably should have said, a minimum of twenty percent is, um, will be spent on learning loss, the majority will be spent on instruction.
The positions that we're creating with that, were, what budget would that allow after twenty twenty-four?
If they're successful and we wanna continue those, they're not the general fund, and that's why I warn you all about our fund balance, you know, that we have to make sure that we maintain this, if all of these, if they are successful and they're needed, we're gonna have to.
Tough decisions to make at this time.
Okay, so we're just talking about this one, this one is literacy for learning, living, and leading, and a fresh that improving literacy by unified community-driven action with research, proof, and instruction. Georgia State Plan promises to improve literacy learning by establishing partnerships that utilize evidence-based practices of proven success for improving student learning, teaching learning, classroom literacy instruction, and this is for birth to grade twelve. Um, it helps the school climate, and we literacy, and community school partnerships. Our revenues, uh, from federal funds will be about one point two million, and our expenditures will be on books for students, professional learning for teachers, literacy interventionists, and minor renovations of media centers. Literacy about one point two million dollars. Right, this is a new fund for us, so this will be our enterprise funds, um, the school zone traffic camera speeding fines, so we will soon, we have to receive these funds, but soon the sheriff's department wants to hand over those funds for, um, to the school system to use from, for safety and security at our schools. So revenues are the fines from the speeding, the school zones. And then to ensure to be security and safe in our schools, um, we are gonna form a committee, and it'll be a committee decision made of the sheriff department, school system employees, and outside stakeholders to decide how to use this fund. Right now, we really have no idea what the revenues are gonna be right now, we're just estimating that'll be about five, three thousand dollars.
Does he have any run rate numbers through the first, through the first six, eight months, whatever it's been?
Um, he gave us some numbers, but then I think he has to pay back sometime, so, um, I mean, it's substantial, I think it's about seven hundred fifty thousand a year, maybe?
Good, so this is a sand, this, there's some sand in this.
Hopefully that will go down, because people will stop speeding in school zones, but, um.
It's there for us then for safety and security, we'll take it.
Hopefully it'll slow them down, there was some go up, we'll have people speeding in ours.
Well, hopefully it'll slow them down, but if it doesn't slow them down, then we'll take the money and we'll make our school safer with it. Well, hopefully it'll slow them down, but if it doesn't slow them down, then we'll take the money and we'll make our school safer with it and help.
I don't think that is clear to the general public either, that the money's coming to us, because I see those.
And what we're going to use it for when it comes to us will be George's full safety.
To be fair, you know, there are some of these programs out here where it does, right, the schools, but um sheriff's department, sheriff's office were very clear about they wanted it to go to SRO, you know, with needs for SROs, not salaries, which you can't do salaries with it, but um and and to keep pardoning and and improving safety for the schools. And I think that's, I think that's something to be lauded out there, because that's, you know, not every, not every law enforcement office out there does that, so we're blessed.
Our last one, school food nutrition, Veracan School Nutrition Program mission is to promote a successful academic experience and encourage a lifetime of healthy eating. The staff at each school provides better students with a base of nutrition education and meals that are nutritious, appetizing, certified caring professionals and friendly, cheerful environment. Refugees are federal funds and sales of meals. And our expenditures are salaries, benefits, food purchases, supplies and equipment. We do want y'all to know that this year, we had past two years, federal government has given a waiver that we didn't have students paying for their lunches. The federal government is covering that, it's no longer going to be there, so students are going to have to start paying for their lunches. Fill out those, we're calling them school benefits, school school benefit forms, everybody needs to fill out school benefit forms to see if you can get a reduced or free lunch. But this got to be real important that we let our parents know that lunches are no longer free and it's not us making that decision, it's federal government making that decision. Alright, so we're anticipating revenues of nine point two million, our expenditures of nine point three million, food costs have gone through the roof. Um, so we are anticipating a loss, we hope that doesn't happen, but um we'll see what happens, we just want, we're very conservative, we just want to make sure that we power ourselves.
So since we're going from free lunches, that means not everything, do you mess up with you, we'll have to get back in the collection.
But remember, you all voted on the policy that says that we are going to charge, we're going to charge up to five meals in in elementary school. We're going to have the whole page I got, and then after that, they did an alternative lunch, so that's good. But we see an alternative lunch and that would be free to them, they can take the alternative lunch.
Your lips got a tear.
No, 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 no. We're going to need to talk about that. We're going to need to talk about that.
For your communication, we're going to have our parents to fill out those forms and then you don't qualify, then you're going to have to send some.
It's very, yeah, it's very important that people get those things in, you know, you just said that, but I can't reiterate that enough. It affects not just them personally for the meals, but it affects our Title I levels and a lot of other things too, so it's very.
Well, a lot more people qualify that think they don't qualify, because the income limits are actually pretty high.
Yeah, Miss Stevens, answer to your question, if I'm doing the math right, with homeless right now is three hundred and sixty eight, three hundred and sixty eight.
Three hundred and sixty eight? Thank you.
And only, most of those, the vast majority of those over two hundred are are doubled up at home, so it's not, it's all shelters or hotels, but fairly small numbers in the hotels and shelters.
Right, so this is what our other funds look like. We have four different categories, our special revenue funds, basically always federal funds, I just never, we're anticipating revenues of twenty six million seventy nine thousand nine hundred and ten and twenty six million one hundred and sixty three four eighty seven in expenditures for a net loss of eighty three thousand five hundred and seventy seven, hope that doesn't happen, but we're just anticipating it. Um, so our estimated slide balance will go down to one million eight hundred eighty one thousand nine hundred and thirteen in those funds. For our enterprise fund, five hundred thousand income, five hundred thousand dollars in expenditures for our housing projects, seventeen point two million dollars in revenue, forty six point one million dollars in expenditures. And of course, we have, we have um anticipated this, so we made sure our funds was able to handle this. And it is, so we're still going to have a positive fund balance in. And then our debt service, nine point four million dollars in transfers in and nine point four million dollars in transfers out. So this is what I will be asking you to approve next Tuesday for our tentative federal funds budget. So our next steps will be vote on this tentative budget, all other plans next Tuesday, we'll hold public hearings on the budget at six P M here at the P D C on June thirteenth. Another public hearing on the budget, ten A M here at the P D C on June sixteenth. And then if all goes well, on June twenty first, we'll meet again at the first session and approve the final budget. Any questions? Alright.
Thank you, great job. No, you're not.
I'm like, gee, you ran some, some knowledge and seventy seven percent of those are dollars.
Great, thanks. Okay.
Hey, Sam, do you want to go ahead and open up the presentation and I will just move on forwards as we went through it to the decision page. Right? So this is where we're at. Um, we're kind of deciding on what military everyone's comfortable with. Anything you need from me or?
Yeah, I think based on our conversations last meeting, I've heard from some of you, I think seventeen point eight eight is kind of where the the appetite is.
Not where my appetite is. No, so we have, we do not know at this point. Uh, well, first of all, let's go with seventeen point eight and tell me how much it's going to cost us in in funding from the state. Because that has not been factored into this.
Sure, so that's something that we can't calculate, so we don't know what any other districts are doing. However, our um our budget's been up so much this year that I don't know how much other districts, if our if ours went up this year, we say that eighteen point five, we did, we were the only district that went up that high, then we probably lose funding, because that that equalization rate is only for the poor county. So we would be at work, would never be high income, but it would be higher on that. But we just don't know what other counties do.
Right, and we still don't have, we don't know how much more money. We've already had to have two increases in fuel costs in the budget this year. We have also, we we know that food, the cost of food is going up and and the cost of everything else that we're buying is going up. So we based our budget on what we thought things were going to cost, and we've already seen huge increases in just about everything. So it's entirely possible that not only would we, if we drop it back to this, then we'll have to take more money out of of our reserves. Um, and the difference between the two mileage rates per household, and let's just throw the hundred and, what was median income, hundred and sixty five thousand? Let's just say it's three hundred and twenty thousand, you're still looking at about seventy dollars a year more in taxes per family. Okay, which works out, divide that by twelve. Not much, but it adds up when we have to spend it. And we've got, we've got I don't think that we have enough social workers and counselors for these kids. Because we're we're talking about learning losses, but we we still haven't really factored in uh the fact that a lot of these children, a lot of the issues we're seeing, a lot of the reasons teachers are leaving is because of disciplinary problems and issues that they see where they just don't think it's worth their effort in classroom. I think there's just tons of ways we need to spend this money this year. We can look at reducing this next year if these numbers hold up, but we also don't know if they're going to hold up. And y'all don't want to do another tax increase once you go over this.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, I want to speak to something that that Lynn just said there about, you know, increases in prices and next year and and so forth. And this was the question that I was kind of trying to ask when we were together last time. We, and and I just kind of, I'm answering this question for myself, but also for the board at large, or trying to get an answer for this. We do not have the flexibility, the board, to run, we have to run a balanced budget, is our intent, is our, it is our fiscal responsibility to run, you know, not a deficit or a surplus, but just to to run on budget, is that correct?
Right.
Correct.
You're correct.
So, so I mean, my question to the board, and and I guess specifically to Lynn in this particular question, I mean, how can we, how can we intentionally run a surplus? I mean, the numbers are what the numbers are today.
We're not running a surplus, we don't know that we're running a surplus.
Yes, we are.
You are asking to run surplus.
You are asking to run a surplus.
No.
Yes, you are. You certainly are, and if a Democrat did, you would have a problem with it, Lynn, because what you're.
Not at, not at this point, not knowing.
You certainly want, it's playing politics with it, you talked a play about it yesterday. You're playing politics with it, and what it comes down to, if we talk about rainy day fines, they're saying that they only suggest to run on a two and a half month budget. And you're asking, what you're asking this board to do is keep, keep the rainy day, let's just keep more, put more in a rainy day fine. If a Democrat said that, you would have a holy fit.
First of all, a Democrat would never say that, okay, because they like spending money they don't have.
I had a big problem with keeping money that we don't need, and I don't want us.
I think Kenny hit it on the nose last week, I think what you said was very profound. If we can't justify lowering the mileage rate this year.
A half million dollar increase in the digest, we won't ever be able to justify.
And we won't.
And I think, I think.
I'm sorry, um, Jennifer, what was, I I don't, I I'm sorry that I'm not there, and I'm sorry that I kind of get a little, it gets a little garbled on my end. Did we answer the question, I mean, we're, we're, we are tasked with running a balanced budget, right? Not a surplus and not a deficit, is that just a yes or no question?
That is, that is correct, um, I think, well, what you could do is spend that extra one point nine million dollars on additional teacher and staff increases or social workers or something like that. We would never, ever advertise a budget that had a high surplus, that's not.
We can't play the bank at money.
Yeah, so you you guys at board would have to say that increasing salaries is something that y'all would want to do, this extra money for providing more social workers or whatever that y'all would.
But our original budget had those increases built in, it was just going to cost us four point seven million dollars at the fund house.
Correct.
So.
What we have.
Yes, we got rid of continuing increase even without.
Even without.
That's what our conversation was last week, we would still buy all the forty six.
I don't think that it's physically conservative to now say that we know that the money has come in a lot higher, so let's see what we can do to spend every bit of that, instead of giving it back to the tax.
I completely agree with you. So do we know how many folks have appealed their taxes and and how much that is going to come out of this?
Um, I budgeted five percent loss for abuse. That's already in this, five percent of what the taxes are due.
Been about right the past few years.
Y'all do what you want to do, you're going to do it anyway, and that's fine, I'm just telling you, uh, based on everything that I've seen and researched, y'all be ready to raise it back up there. Well, we work for the taxpayers, no ma'am, you work for the students in this county.
And the students and the taxpayers.
And the taxpayers.
And can you talk about being physically conservative, that's not physically conservative when more money came in. What would you have done before the digest came in? We had already looked at the budget and had the extra money to do this, you're now not wanting to do it because you think it's going to help Kenny.
I've been talking, I've been.
He had played that you thought that this would help Kenny. Because most of the people that complain about their money is from the Georgia club, and you thought it would help Kenny get back in all this, that's playing politics, that's what that is. That's exactly what that is, you're not playing politics.
Are you through?
I'm through.
That's good. Sounds pretty typical. Again, I'm probably the most fiscally conservative person on this board. Have been consistently for all my years on this board. But we have talked, I've been talking for two years about the fact that we don't have enough social workers and we don't have enough counselors for these students. That money could be spent on that. We we have tons of things that we could spend money on, including teacher raises to bring us up to speed with counties around us that we have, if we have this extra money. But the other thing we need to do is look at how many more people we're having to hire, how many more students we're going to have in these classrooms. We're hiring over forty teachers this year. New teacher, new positions. And we've got a list, we've always had a list of things that we needed to spend money on, we've never been able to do. So if, you know, it costs somebody seventy dollars a month, a year more on their taxes, their average tax bill, uh, for us to have what we need in terms of counselors and social workers and people who actually um work with these kids, then I don't have a problem with that.
Lynn, I hate politics and I don't like getting involved in them when I'm sitting in this seat, but that is the most anti Republican thing I've ever heard, first of all, second of all. Second of all, this board and that superintendent has always sat in that seat and made sure that these students and these teachers always have everything that they need, and I doubt that that's going to stop right now. So I don't think we need to sit here and hash all this out.
Just, just in, in, take sides on this, but um, the budget has everything we feel we need. We set that budget that way, so just to be clear on that. There are some, you know, we'd love to have more, but kind of go back to your point, if it goes down and our income goes down, then we'll be cutting those new positions. And so we really have to find a balance when we do that. Um, to be careful with that, um, the raise fees, absolutely, they deserve a raise, given, I think, pretty much what it comes to four percent this year. Um, you all have already, already approved. We always wish it could be more, and if things stay the way they are, we'll ask for, you know, we'll keep revisiting and bringing that up more and more. You also have to be careful with that too, if we do go backwards, Miss Stevens is not incorrect about, there's always that that chance of that happening and and with a correction of some sort. You know, we can't take that back, you you can, you can give raises, but you can't take raises back. So you got to be, you've got to, you know, I've seen folks that, oh, we need to give them twenty percent, and I would be the first one in line to do that. But that would not be physically responsible and we couldn't necessarily sustain it.
Right.
Um, so you, you know, those things, they all weigh in there, um. I just, just wanted to point out that, yeah, we always, we could definitely use more counselors, now there wouldn't be any state funding to go along with that, or any of those things too. So it's, it's a bigger, sometimes it's a bigger ticket item than than we think off the top and have to stop the top.
We currently have three counselors in the budget right now.
Yeah, we we've added some.
Ricky, you weren't here last week, is there anything you want to add?
Well, it's, oh. I want to, we'll go back to the slide that shows our previous, our history of our military. And I want to say I came on the board two thousand, two thousand and one. And we're able to profit till two thousand and seven, it's been eighteen point five since then. And we went through some struggles as a school district, had enough money, we had to go back and refinance bonds. And so I look at this, maybe a little different, maybe some, I don't know, maybe we all look at it the same, uh, but I don't look at it lightly, outside that. Looking at it, I mean, it's, it's going to be for one year, right?
Yes.
So one, it's a one year. Pardon my friend, well, I didn't say it, but if we mess up.
We go back.
We go back. Oh. This is, this is my struggle, I I I can't, I can't say that I'm had trouble with it. But uh I think it's a difficult thing to do. Just to roll the military.
Back at that.
I get you too, what, I, I think, you know, we just have to realize, we kind of have a political will, and if we need it, we've got to go back up.
That's right.
When that happens, and nobody likes to do that, but.
Be responsible.
Correct me if I'm wrong. Is this fifty two million three sixty seven, is that how much we've got budgeted with the raise, with all that? So even if we go to seventeen point eight eight, that's bringing in fifty seven million, so it's bringing in more even dropping it back, is that correct?
Twelve percent tax increase.
Exactly.
That's what the twelve percent increase is.
Still a twelve percent increase.
Because of the digest.
Because of the digest, but we still bring in that much more money.
And we also have to think about the economic things we do.
Yeah, we talked about that last week. We.
Yeah, we're going to take four ways now. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to call a question. I'm going to call a question, please both, call the question, go ahead, both.
Can we have a motion then to?
Call a question.
Motion, okay. Seventeen point eight eight.
I'm making a motion that we go back to seventeen point eight.
We have to vote, we have to vote, call a question for us.
Call a question.
Do you second?
I second.
Okay.
And I made the motion that we go to seventeen point nine eight.
Oh, yeah, I think.
You do that after.
Get the road on, call him a question first. But, yes, yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I made the motion we did a seventeen point eight.
Seven.
All in favor of seventeen point eight eight?
I'll second it.
In favor? Those opposed? Okay. Seven to one. Thank you, Jennifer. All right, we're going to move into executive session to discuss and deliberate upon appointment, employment compensation, hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal. Or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employer, employee to interview applicants for the position of superintendent. And or in discuss or vote to authorize negotiations to purchase, dispose of or lease property. Authorize ordering and appraisal related to acquisition or disposal of real estate, enter into a contract or purchase, dispose of or lease property subject to approval in a subsequent public vote. Or enter into an option to purchase, dispose of or lease real estate subject to approval in a subsequent public vote.
For what?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Not really.
Yes.
Yes.